Okay, welcome everybody to our special library building committee February 5th. Appreciate everybody being able to make it. We do have a quorum, so call the meeting to order. There is a lot of stuff to go through because all, everything's in motion here, so let's get to it. We have minutes from January 15th.
Don't move!
Moved by Mr. Ike.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Berman. I had one correction that I noted. Page eight of nine. Under approval of invoices. The second bullet. Wait till Joe gets there. I believe the second bullet should be for Prosser Library. There are eight of nine, second bullet. A second bullet under approval of invoices.
TSKP's, I got it.
Yep, that should be Prosser rather than McMahon. Any other corrections? All right. Our motion is as corrected, right, Mr. Ike and Mr. Berman?
Yes, sir!
Hey, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
You nays? Motion passes, thank you. All right, next is minutes. From regular meeting, January 22nd. I'm sorry, that was a special meeting, January 22nd. We have a motion to approve the minutes.
Don't move!
Berman, seconded by Mr. Ike. Any comments, corrections? Was a single item agenda to approve the purchase of the furniture.
Oh, okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Any comments, corrections? And, all right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
You nays? We're good. Motion passes, thank you. All right, under new business, I just want to mention that we, when I say we, Joe and myself and Scott from Downs, we did have a budget meeting since our last regular meeting, and so we'll see the results of that and then talk about that more as we, as we move forward through our meeting. It's all good, by the way, and I did, there was a, also a library board of trustees meeting to start the process of discussion on the dedication to Mr. Suggs, so we'll hear more on that as well. So let's go to Downs with their report, please. Anthony, are you on?
Yes, I am. Everybody, hopefully you can hear me. All right, let me share my screen. All right, agenda's still the same as usual, go down for general items, Prosser, Riley, and then go over financials and pictures. First item, General, TSKP reviewed the parging, which has been approved. That was a mock-up. That exterior wall mock-up has been fully reviewed at this point. As you can see around the building, we have brick going up, which is a good sight to see. Interior mock-ups are continuing to be completed throughout the space. Interior, we took room 213. Mocked up the ceiling, the radiant panel, light fixtures, devices, all went well there, but we continue to have smaller mock-ups throughout the space for TSKP's review to make sure we're getting the detail correct and those sightlines and everything correct. Above ceiling inspections on the second floor with the town BO are continuing. Wood doors actually have been delivered to the site, and Van Zelm, as a general item, continues to make site visits of its installed MEP systems and providing the field reports to date. No issues, he's very happy with the quality of the installation so far, but as we get moving forward with the boilers and the RTUs, his presence on site are gonna be more important as we move forward. Going down, Prosser, Prosser update, site work contractor was continuing backfilling the main plaza entrance and curbing for the sidewalks. Completed final connections of the main water service as well. Cast stone and face brick are continuing installed on the west when we could get a 40-degree and above day, as well as the north elevation, which is covered in the containment for cold weather protection procedures. Masonry air and vapor barrier will start to be applied on the south elevation once we get off of the canopy, as well as the east elevation. The small parapet level at the roof does have brick, so we'll be applied that. Good thing about that is it's got a good cold weather application, I think, down to like 20 degrees. So if we have 20-degree weather and rising, we'll be able to apply that. Interior brick work is continuing, we'd stopped, but we're getting back on it and finishing up. There's intricate detail with the acoustical wall panels and the brick and how that whole elevation ties together. Scaffolding and staging, again, you could see is on the north elevation, that's for the tent for the cold weather, so brick can continue with the installation. Any, like I said before, any days we get above 40, they shift their crew over to the west elevation, working off the hydro mobile scaffolding system to get that done. They usually staff the job, if they can, with nine masons, three laborers to continue to push forward to get that done. Spray foam insulation is about halfway done on the garage level. Again, that's a temperature-derived installation. We do have some heat down there, we had an issue with one of our heaters, so they had to stop halfway through. Porch deck framing and canopy ceiling blocking work has started and basically been completed. As you can see in the pictures, as we get the ceiling, PVC panel ceiling has gone in. Metal pans have been infilled at the monumental stair number three. The mezzanine guardrail system also has been installed. Stair one installations have begun. They're about, I would say, 80% complete with that. We're looking to pour those infills of those concrete steps next week. Interior wall layout and framing has been completed again on both levels. We have some miscellaneous drywall patches to take care of on the inside at both levels. That leads us to interior taping. We're about 95% complete on the second level and about 80% still on the main. We need to take a look at that and get that done. Second level priming paint continues. Elevator railings and structural portions of the elevator system have been installed. We're waiting to finish the CMU at the doors of the elevator. Once that's complete, Otis will be back on site finishing the final touches of the cab for the elevator. Fire protection is ongoing with branch lines and continuing for all three components of the systems, the dry, the chemical, and the wet systems. Plumbing drainage lines also, final tie-ins, which were happening at the canopy, have been completed. In-wall plumbing has been completed and inspected on second level and main level. Mechanical piping is continuing at all levels, finishing touches there. Duckwork installation, duckwork installation and duckwork insulation is about 95% complete for the entire building. We do have some exterior-grade insulation work to happen at the mechanical space outside. Final duckwork tie-ins are being made at that mechanical outdoor space, and once that's all done, we'll be able to get out there and insulate. The boilers, the hot water tank have been rigged on the upper-level mechanical room, and the final piping tie-ins are commencing and work being done at this time. The RTUs are rigged, and then on top of the dungeon, that is actually a completed item. VAVs have been installed, power to them, all right, connected to the duckwork lines. We have some control wiring to be done on those. As you can see, that leads into the next bullet. Point here is the HVAC controls roughens are continuing. Electrical light fixtures and devices have started to be installed throughout where we have ceiling grid and where we have some wall space. Fire alarm and communication roughens are ongoing. We hope to, first week of March, to have the fire alarm system active with the town. That's a big life safety checkbox we could take off the list. Millwork deliveries have started. We're a little slow with that because we want to make sure the relative humidity and the temperature within the space is acclimated to the right temperature, but more importantly is the relative humidity for the final wood product. Curtain wall, you could see at night, it glows nice with the glass up, and you could see on the interior of the building. And then we have acoustical grid and ceiling tiles in selected areas on the second floor in progress, as well as we sign off above-ceiling inspections. Moving on to the Riley site, we continue to, we've actually completed the crane pad location, and we have landed the bridge as everybody drives by, the bridge isn't installed. It's set to the final piece, we have that fourth piece of bridge out, so Manafort can continue to complete their site work that's required on that backside of the lot, so they have a gentleman's agreement between the steel company and themselves to keep that fourth piece off, which could be erected by a knuckle truck, a boom truck, not a crane. Exterior light poles have been installed as much as possible on that lot, as we also installed the timber guardrail posts, as you could see, along the east side of that Riley lot towards the back. Anybody have any questions?
When do you expect the envelope?
Can you make sure you're near the mic?
When do you expect the envelope to be complete?
Right now, we're probably a good month and a half away. We're two weeks away from the north side, getting their aluminum frames and glazing in, in the windows. We're gonna move to the west side, but brick needs to be completed before the windows finish up on that south side. So you're probably about a month and a half, you're about six weeks, six weeks to eight weeks on that.
More questions? Patrick?
Thank you, Chair. Anthony, I just wondering about the weather. I mean, tomorrow, there's a snowstorm in the morning, how is that affecting the work? Then there's like two more coming shortly after.
Definitely slows it down, but we're not gonna lose any production on the inside of the building.
Okay, right.
Or on the north side of the exterior envelope, because they are covered in winter protection. Where we lose time is, I'm hoping to get, you know, three to four more days of, you know, 40 degrees or more on that west side, so I could finish that. They're so close to finishing that west elevation, which is the biggest chunk of the brick.
Any hands up there, Joe?
Mark?
Oh, sorry, Lois, go ahead.
I've asked this before, but I just need to be reminded, when do we go back and fix the beams inside?
They're fixed. We got a couple streaks on some other beams that have to be taken care of, but right now, most of those beams have been completed and cleaned up.
And how did you do it?
They sanded, lightly sanded, and then refinished.
Great, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, you may continue.
Sweet, awesome. Financial section, requisitions and potential change orders. Well, this should say January 2025 requisition, just for everybody paying attention, I snuck that one in there. All right, in the amount of $1,6828.84, and I hope, Joe, that matches up today. Righty, so I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Makes sense.
Don't move! Don't move!
Moved by Mr. Ike. Seconded by Mr. Berman. Questions? Any hands up there, Joe? Good? Okay. All in favor of approving application number 19 for the amount of $1,6828.84, please say aye.
Aye!
You nays? Motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is the GMP CO number eight that I have here, which was a combination of all the PCOS that were approved at the last meeting in the total amount of $4,409.
Don't move!
For approval by Mr. Ike, seconded by
Second.
Lois, thank you very much. Questions? Comments? This is all the PCOS that we approved previously, just all conglomerated into a, what is now a PCCO, right?
Prime contract change order.
Okay, get our terminology correct. Thank you, New South. No questions? All in favor of approving PCCO number eight, please say aye.
Aye!
You nays? Motion passes. Good for that.
All right, now we're gonna go into pending PCOS and budgeted PCOS, 34. We're still continuing to track the DOT paving requirements. We are trying to do our due diligence with the DOT inspectors once that paving comes back around in the springtime to get rid of this cost, but I still want to be conservative and track it. The plaza entrance modifications due to the MDC, I do have a credit coming in from Manafort, so this PCO 35 is gonna be reduced significantly. I like to get that on the next committee meeting, obviously pending the review of the design team and their consultants. The washbrook invasive erosion controls, I'm gonna avoid this one at this point in time with conversations with Glenn and the DPW and Richter Seegan at this point in time. We have, the DPW cannot perform the work. They have asked TSKP and their consultants to devise another plan. There was some discussion of having our landscaper hold their price for some of the plantings at the embankment up until year 2027, and they did not agree withholding their price. That was submitted about a year ago for another two years. So we're kind of trying to figure out what to do there with Richter Seegan and TSKP, but right now, I am going to avoid that PCO 36. PCO 44 was the unforeseen utility conflicts. I am working back and forth with Manafort on that one. That was all the unforeseen restrictions on the Tungstus Avenue side with additional police detail based on the existing conditions that weren't documented on the ASBIL for a call before you dig. PCO 47 is the column line four modifications. I am showing a $10,283 budget for our structural steel company to move that horizontal tube member up two inches. Right now, with what we have approved through our GMP, with what I have here for pending PCOS and what I have below for official PCOS that I want to get approved tonight, we do have a contingency update in the amount of $619,527.
Yes, it did go up. I mean, there was some budget reconciliation going on, some minor adjustments there, but we have been receiving some credits on some of the allowances, unspent allowances that can be released. So it's a nice, healthy number at this point. Yes, absolutely.
Mark, if I may?
Yes, please.
Also, the technology budget came in really well, the technology proposals. That put a big boost to it, and some of the FFNE, or the FFNE on Prosser, there were some savings there, so that, I think there was about $170,000 in savings from the last time we presented to now with just those two items.
Can I ask? Scott, can you share with us, there is also, that is the owner's contingency.
Yes.
Being shown here. There is also, within the contract, a CM contingency. And where, where is that at right now?
I, right now, that's about $742,000 left in our CM contingency, and that includes the Wagner railing system I like to talk about below in the next official PCO section.
I bring that up because I want to propose that we shift some of that CM contingency to the to the McMahon project, and when we get to Glenn's report, I just want to talk about it then, but just, please hold that thought.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions so far, before I go into official PCOS for committee approval tonight? Questions for Anthony? Okay, you may proceed.
All righty, we tabled PCO 29. Last time we met, I'm coming to the table with some more information. We had that $79 Red Tech breakout on the invoicing, and there was a $63 difference between the unit pricing that we had established in the contract for Manafort. That difference includes multiple onsite handlings and use of poly and tarps for this contaminated soil. That includes a labor foreman, a laborer operator times two, two operators, one for an excavator, one for a loader, tri-oxal equipment, as well as trucking to Red Tech. So that's what the difference is at 63.
Don't move!
Also, I did some forensics on when we received the bids for our site work bid package on these unit prices. Mather Construction was $150. And we had Genovese, which was $134, so Manafort fell right in line, right in the middle. So using that outlier, we are, have a pretty justified unit price cost there.
Are you comfortable that $63 per ton does in fact reflect the effort that was put in by those other pieces? Because I don't know whether labor, since they charged you by the ton.
Right.
I don't know whether time and labor would have been included in.
Right, no, well, it is included in the difference of the 79, right? So yes, the way they multiply, handle this material because of the high contaminants in it, yes, that $63, I believe, is justified on top of that $79 for that total unit price of 142. And then looking back, like I said, on the other two subcontractors who provided bids on their official bid form, Manafort seems to fall right in line with what's required for that type of soil classification.
I would just like to suggest that it would have been easier if we'd had a little more information at the time when we first considered it.
Of course.
And the fact that we might not have seen the lower number should not have been relevant. It should have just been picked up and said here is why there is such a difference.
Correct.
And I think from the, from the get-go, that should have happened.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Lois. You have the backup. Right. So a motion to approve PCO 29 was made by Mr. Ike. I heard that.
Second.
Second, from Jesse, thank you.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Comments? All in favor of approving PCO number 29, please say aye.
Aye!
I'm sorry, we have a hand up, Joe. Ava?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mr. Chair. For the folks who are actually in the meeting room, could you kind of make sure you're near the microphone when you're speaking, because the rest of us can't actually hear you all the time? Thanks.
Thanks, Ava. Okay, all in favor of approving PCO number 29, please say aye.
Aye!
Aye.
Any nays? Abstention?
One abstention.
Okay. All right, motion passes, thank you very much. Next, Anthony.
All right, PCO 54. This was the reintroduction of the Wagner railing system at the plaza with, we spoke last time. I think I had a number floating around somewhere around $90,000. We did get conditional approval to really shop drawings for $14,500 at that time with conversation with our electrical contractor. We do have the lit handrails being Wagner, and they have also included the unlit Wagner railings at the plaza, so we could have a nice aesthetic look. With that being said, with further negotiations with our electrician, we have reduced the price to $81,000 minus $14,488 from our Miss Metal subcontractor for a total contingency, our CM contingency draw of $67,165, netting a zero cost to the project, as this will be applied to our CM contingency. And before, when I mentioned, we have $742,000 of CM contingency, this number is included in that.
Already taken into consideration.
Correct.
Don't move!
Hey, PCO number 54, move for approval by Mr. Ike, seconded by Mr. Berman, thank you very much. Any questions? Just a little explanation, just the Wagner railings are a manufactured item, a specialty item that were in the bid. They're, as you can see, they're very pricey, they're a nice product. So Downs Construction was hoping that they could be custom-built at a lower price, and that's what we had been going with up to this point, but they couldn't. So we're back to the original aspect of the material.
Correct.
Which I'm sure we'll all be pleased with.
Yep, I think Jeff's happy about that, too.
All right, any questions? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye!
Aye!
You nays? Motion passes, thank you very much. Next.
All right, last one. We had some testing completed on the vapor moisture emissions in our curing slabs. We had a $75,000 allowance of vapor emissions to apply a topical mitigation system under the entire square footage of what's to receive a finished floor. So as a follow-up to a presentation and a memo that we did back in June and July regarding this mitigation of the moisture emissions for the finished floor materials over the concrete slabs, we want to bring forth a recommendation to the building committee's review and approval to implement a topical, like I said, moisture emissions mitigation system over all the concrete slabs that are requiring a finished floor material in accordance with the project specifications and the manufacturer requirements. The relative humidity and alkalinity pH as compared to the most stringent relative humidity and pH threshold in either the specification or required by the manufacturer. The results of the slab testing are, show that the slab is still continuing to dry out. There are RH and pH levels that exceed the necessary stringent requirements. We feel that this is a necessary topical application to put down to block those vapor emissions. Again, this is a snapshot in time. Those slabs continue to emit vapor a month from now, a year from now, five years from now. Again, so this is a snapshot on time. We want to make sure, obviously, we don't have any, any moisture-related bond failures of the adhesives of the finished floor to the concrete, and this is one way we can maintain a complete flooring systems warranty. Again, I just want to note that the RH and pH test reflects conditions at a specific point in time. Again, the results will vary due to ongoing changes in the ambient conditions of the building as the slabs continue to dry. We want to apply a Ardex VB100, which blocks 100 up to 100% of the relative humidity within a yield of an extended system warranty of 10 years. We did, like I say before, have a $75,000 allowance for this, this application for when the time came. So at the end of the day, we are looking to provide our flooring subcontractor with a change order of $45,451, which includes $2,100 of premium time. We don't want to shut the daily activities of the building down to apply this vapor emissions, this topical moisture mitigation system. So we want to do it on off-shift hours, so they could come in the next day and apply their finished flooring without disrupting any of the finished trades. When we apply it to our $75,000 GMP-established vapor emissions allowance, we net a credit back to the owner's contingency of $29,549.
Don't move!
Okay, moved by Mr. Ike. Seconded by Jesse, thank you. I just want to make it clear that this had been distributed last week before the overtime hours were included, as Anthony just described. So, so you should be looking at something that, as he said, is a net credit of $29,000 and change, because I had one in my
It was like 31.
Which was another roughly $2,000.
Correct.
Give me the numbers again, please.
We had a flooring subcontractor, yep, it was a $45,451 cost on theirs, which included premium time. And then our vapor emissions allowance was $75,000, and then you'll have a net credit going back to the owner's contingency of $29,549.
Hey, questions? Comments? Lois?
I'm sorry, but are we worried about water vapor? Are we worried about other types of vapor?
This, this product blocks everything, right? So more importantly, it's vapor emissions from a curing slab, right? So if you do have a trapped moisture content that affects the bonding of the adhesive between the bottom side of the finished floor and the actual concrete slab, this product blocks 100% of any moisture that is gonna be coming out.
So Lois, in short, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Was it something that was expected, or was it the location, or was it the timing of putting the slab down? What was this?
Again, it's a snapshot in time. There's always varying conditions based on the ambient conditions within the building, right? You could have your RTUs on, and it all depends on that. But the reason why we had a $75,000 allowance is because we assumed that, based on test results and past projects and historical data that we had, we wanted to put it in as an allowance to be established as part of our contract lump sum, so we could utilize a product to block out any potential flooring failures.
I appreciate that, we're worried about the flooring. Do we have to worry about mold?
No.
Now, Lois, we put this allowance in before we signed our guaranteed maximum price as an insurance policy, because there was no additives designed for the concrete slabs. So we wanted to have this in place, just in case we're in the winter, like we are now, and we're not able to get the moisture out of the slab based on timing, in time to put flooring down, it hasn't cured enough. So we need, we needed to have this outlet to be able to keep, you know, the project safe from any flooring failures, as well as if there were You know, the project safe from any flooring failures, as well as if there were any, you know, anything was scheduling in order to, you know, keep things going if the floor didn't dry out in time.
Scott, can I add a little bit to that, too?
Sure. Sure.
I think so, Lois, too, is in this day and age with all these low VOCs and adhesives for the flooring. We just have to make sure that every manufacturer for these new flooring adhesives, you know, can give us a warranty. So I think Scott, what he's trying to convey and Anthony is that we're doing our due diligence to make sure that those adhesives will work. It's better for the environment, but we have to pay attention to the moisture in the slab at any time, any season during construction. So I think Scott and Anthony are on the right on with making sure that we don't have any issues. And the only thing I've been trying to get some assurances on, I think I got that, is that the flooring manufacturers have all bought in on this. So, so, you know, it's all good.
Yeah, Lois, just wanted to make sure that this does not raise any potential mold issues.
No.
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 Mr. Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I want to point out that way back in June, July, when this issue came up as a possibility. One of the things that came up was the fact that if we didn't, weren't prepared to do something, knowing that we were going to be pouring concrete in the winter. That we may have problems with warranties. And one of the big concerns. This committee had at the time was, we don't need to do anything that's going to potentially void warranties, because we need those warranties. Something happens with any of the material. And I remember when you told us about the seventy five thousand dollar allowance. You also said you knew it was way more than was probably going to be needed, but that was the worst case scenario. And the fact that we're able to do all the concrete, I believe it's the first floor.
It's, it's everything, it's a slab, second level, main level.
The whole thing.
The whole thing, all to, I think it comes out to twenty seven thousand square feet of finished floor that's going to get this Ardex product.
The fact that we're doing it for just over half of what they thought the worst case scenario was going to be. If they had to use an entirely different product, I think speaks well to what they've done for us in this case. And there's guarantees, our warranties are going to stay in place.
Correct.
That's important.
Questions, Patrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Anthony, I think you partially answered, my one question was, would this be on all of the slabs? So it would include, does it include the garage level?
No, it doesn't include the garage slab, anywhere that's getting a finished floor, whether it be carpet, tile in the bathrooms, linoleum, VCT, rubber.
Yeah.
Everything gets applied.
Okay, so it does include friends of the library space?
It would include that, that's getting it.
Okay, because that is in the lower level. Okay, so my next question is, how will this be accomplished? Because you're going to have so much work going on. Like, will you just pick a spot and say, we'll start here and then move to the next?
Correct, so what we're going to do is Jason and ourselves onsite will come up with a logistics plan. With our flooring subcontractor of where to apply this, how much to apply. And then they'll be on it, the reason why premium time is because they'll pour it at night and the next day they'll be able, it's a walkable surface. And they'll be able to get on it and install the finished floor without disrupting any trades. Bathrooms, first and foremost, are going to, are going to start. So we want to get them in the bathrooms to pour that. And the way it floats and they skim it is it all, you're not going to see any joints, obviously, because there's going to be finished floor on the top of it, right? So it's all going to be.
Right, so they'll have to clean that floor first, right?
Correct, yep.
And then apply this stuff, so.
Correct.
When, do you have an actual start date or do you not?
We're getting in the bathrooms on Monday.
We have to vote on it first.
I know, I know, but we're still getting the bathrooms on Monday.
No, that's, that's good.
Other comments? Okay, all in favor of approving PCO number sixty two, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. All right, thank you, Anthony.
All right, I love yours, we like the fun, yeah, let's go to the fun section, all right? I promise. All right, so Johnny put together, let's see here, his pictures as he usually does for us with the captions, sorry, here. You'll see this nice shot of the east elevation curtain wall. It's been installed, you could see stair three, the monumental stair in the background. And the plaza here, if you look to the lower left of the picture, the plaza ramp cheek walls have been poured and installed. This is that fantastic winter conditions tent for the Mason on the north side. You could see there are platforms and accessibility to installing the brick. You could see the, the, well, you can't see the, the sills, but you could see the headers of the cast stone and the brick going up. They're about a foot away from the roofing level up there. This weekend, they'll be taking that scaffolding down and that whole north side will be opened up. It's going to look fantastic. And then soon to follow after that, we'll hopefully get some, some windows in. You could see here, the pedestrian bridge, we got it delivered, it's starting to get rigged into place. And then the final shot here, as you could see, it's been sat, sat down, you could see that fourth section is missing to allow for access of trucks. For the remaining site work that needs to take place on the Riley from Manafort. The canopy ceiling blocking and insulation has been completed at the canopy, the PVC ceiling insulation has started. This is a second level look, looking south towards the atrium. As you could see here, we've, we've taken care of the, the wood, we've cleaned it up. Like I said before, there was a couple of spots that Mark and Jeff found the other day. So we continue to have our subcontractor take care of that, such as small spots that they may have just overlooked. You could see the guardrail system is up on the mezzanine, that's going to be done, that's done, it's got to be painted. Going down the list here, we have stair number one, that's coming up out, out of the garage level. And up, you could see all the stringers and metal pans installed. We do have guardrails on the interior side of that stairwell that also have been installed, it's a picket system with a handrail. Next week, early next week, we should have our concrete subcontractor in there pouring the concrete into the metal pans. And then after that, we will have our wall railing being installed within the stair. This is air handler unit number one, the other side is, is number two. As you could see, is we have all the RTUs rigged, ductwork ran, it's very large ductwork up there. Everything was coordinated actually perfectly between the dunage, the isolation frame for the RTU and then the RTU on top of it. So it's a three part, three layer system. And everything fit fantastic, that's the type of stuff that keeps me up at night when I know that RTU is coming and to make sure everything's going to fit properly. That went down nicely, little windy, so we had to postpone it and then come in the next morning. It fit, but due diligence of Johnny, he had a painstaking meeting after meeting with the concrete company. With the bridge company and with the structural steel company to rue you dimensions and he nailed it. And last but not least, you have your east elevation curtain wall from the interior side. You see here stair number three on the monumental stair. Those treads that you see there have been filled with concrete, right now they apply wood over them for safety. But they will get a porcelain tile laid out with a pretty intricate pattern when the time comes. And that's it.
All right, questions for Anthony? I see a hand up.
It's, it's Elizabeth.
Hey, Elizabeth.
I had put in a request to Anthony to include the library staff on the monthly reports and the budget reports. Can I ask actually that the whole library building committee receive the monthly reports and the budget reports?
Certainly.
Yeah, just, if we're missing contacts, if we could just get the rest of the contacts, that'd be great.
Or you can work through Joe.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Joe can forward whatever you send to the building committee. Right, Joe?
Thank you.
I know you do, I know you do, so. Okay, any other questions for Anthony? Thank you, Anthony and the Downs crew for your, for everything. All right, so let's move on to Glenn, you've got your update on McMahon.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. This update is brief because not much has happened, we've wrapped up renovation at this time until the summer. We do have a few larger decisions to make as a group tonight regarding the canopies. I have several invoices and proposals mainly from TSKP and Gordian Group. What order would you like to go in? I only have a couple of pictures for updates, the only thing that's changed since our last meeting, let me just share my screen real quick.
Glenn, I can bring up those Gordian and Anderson, I've got them all lined up.
Okay, I'm just going to grab the pictures here real quick, can everyone see that?
We're good.
Yeah.
All right, so the only change since our last meeting, this is the northeast section facing Blue Hills Avenue. All the picture windows, everything has been replaced, all the windows, even these black glass panels on the bottom. And we did install the aluminum break metal over the window molins to really dress that up. And match the new storefront on the southwest section, the children's library. So it's a lot, it's a lot nicer look for the public and the aesthetics of the building. And then we also received our exterior signage. The new signage that you had approved last time was installed by our friends Signs of All Kinds out of Manchester. And it shows up really well, I drove by this afternoon, coming northbound on Blue Hills Avenue from the intersection. And it, it sticks out great, that along with the park sign, it really puts us on the map at this location. Very happy with that new signage. I did reach out to Anderson Electric today for a little change order. I do want, this sign is illuminated, it's LED backlit. And I do want to hook this up to a photo cell, just to control at nighttime, obviously. So I will be gathering a price from Anderson Electric to have its own designated circuit for this new signage. Other than that, that's really the only changes since our last meeting. I do have several invoices and like I said, most importantly, those proposals from TSKP and Gordian Group for the footings for our canopies. So.
Why don't you hit the invoices first?
Okay, let me stop sharing and then Joe, if you don't mind pulling those up.
Oh, and then Glenn, you have the cost for the canopies as well, right? Single or double?
I do. All right, we're back to Joe's screen here.
Yes, we are.
All right.
So this was from Gordian Group and this proposal is to install the footings for two canopies.
Yeah, let's, let's hold off on that till we get through the.
No problem, what order did you want to go in? I guess what we.
Doesn't matter, whatever.
Is just, I'll start out with Anderson Electric, their invoice. And just to let the committee know, I have plugged every number for all invoices and proposals into the budget, which we can go to next and get a good handle on our numbers. But for Anderson Electric, this is progress billing, this will be the second to last invoice that we receive. Since our last meeting, this also includes several change orders that were discussed for additional smokeheads, exit signs that were required. This is for sixty six thousand six hundred thirty seven dollars and sixty seven cents.
So moved.
Moved for approval by Mr. Ike, seconded by Mr. Berman, thank you. Questions?
Then next, Joe, if we could pull up.
Hold on one second, let's, all in favor of approving the Anderson invoice, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, Glenn, next.
Commercial Flooring Concepts, this was for the total payment, they've completed their work for the carpeting and LVT. And change order number one, which was additional self leveling for the connect track system. The above slab electrical runway, forty two thousand six hundred fifty five dollars.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ike, seconded by Mr. Berman, thank you very much, questions? All in favor of approving the invoice from Commercial Flooring Concepts, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes, thank you, next one?
I'd like to go over to Signs of All Kinds. Having trouble, trouble hearing you, Joe.
You know what, he's got the, he's got the interscape.
My screen, I got Interscape up next.
Let's do Interscape.
Okay, that's fine.
Got it up.
For Interscape, for all the furniture, everything was delivered and installed on site. We've got the whole list, we're not showing any backordered quantities. I know Abby was there, she did a walkthrough punch list, every item was taken care of, everything is installed in place. That invoice was ninety six thousand ninety dollars and fifty six cents.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ike. Seconded by Jesse, thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Bob, Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Glenn, I noticed that some of the stuff is, there's a couple of items highlighted in yellow.
Yeah, if you just ignore that, I was actually working off of this sheet and I do apologize, I had to send some specifications over to our fire marshal for approval. Those were the privacy pods, he was questioning some of the materials. So you can ignore that.
Thank you. Other questions, Patrick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey Glenn, Patrick here, so remember last time there was that question about some of the tables and the, another invoice, okay? Never mind.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, all in favor of the Interscape invoice, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion passes, thank you.
This is probably where your question comes into play, Patrick, so this invoice. Red, the first item identified on this invoice is that modular casework. They did quote us the thirty four inch counter height, which is ADA compliant. However, after taking a measurement of what was installed, it's thirty seven inches. I've been working with Abby and Red Thread and they are going to swap that out, it's about four to six weeks out. I did verify that would not affect our certificate of occupancy with the building official. So we are not paying on that one item on this invoice. Rather, at the end, this invoice will total up to twelve thousand seven hundred ninety nine dollars and fifty two cents. For which all other furniture items are installed and approved.
So moved.
Moved for approval by Mr. Ike, seconded by Mr. Berman, thank you. Questions? All in favor of approving the Red Thread invoice as marked, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
You?
And here we have Signs of All Kinds, this is the invoice for the exterior signage that I just showed you, eight thousand five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Ike, seconded by Mr. Berman, questions? All in favor of approving the Signs of All Kinds invoice, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Chris, are you on?
Yeah, I'm here, I'm here, Joe.
Do you want to talk to these invoices for? The D mark relocation and then CDW?
Sure. Yeah, so, yeah, I can do that real quick, because these are McMahon as well. Yeah, this is, this goes way back. The D mark relocation was originally going to be, the original PO was for over ten thousand dollars. Because that was for the project when we were going to expand and had to move the fiber in and out. It was a much smaller move. Here's the charge for that, it's one thousand five of the original, which was, which was over ten thousand dollars. So this actually was going to save us some money here.
So moved.
One thousand five hundred and seventy five dollars, move for approval by Mr. Ike, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Patrick, thank you. Questions?
This, this was within your IT budget, Chris?
No, this, this PO for this back almost like years because it was the planned D mark move for the fiber, so it wasn't even. planned D mark move for the fiber, so it wasn't even part of that budget, um, cause we already had the PO for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to plug this in, Glenn.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, the good news is it's saving us money actually, from what we, um, encumbered.
Right.
Yeah, I'm, hopefully we have a line item here somewhere for it, but, um, okay, thank you, Joe. Ah, okay. Questions? Other questions? All in favor of approving the invoice from, uh, this is actually the state of Connecticut. Uh, for the D mark relocation, please, uh, say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion passes. Thank you.
Chris, you wanna continue with the CDW?
Sure. Um, so, uh, IT, our IT staff, we got to meet with the vendor and the manufacturer and get some, uh, I think better equipment recommendations and actually better pricing. And that is what this quote is for. It's for the new network equipment. There's gonna be two new switches, uh, McMahon Wittenberry. As well as the three new access points and then the ca- the cabling and some of the install brackets. Um, I took out the yellow parts, which is three thousand, eight, eight hundred and thirty-eight seventy-five because it's extended warranty type of information that will be paid if we decide to go with it, um, with the IT department, either the library or IT will pay out of our operations budget. So we're just asking the building committee for the, for the hardware and that's sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight, uh, ninety-four. And that is, um, in the McMahon Wittenberry technology budget. And after doing this, um, we're actually about eleven thousand, five hundred under budget, um, for the whole of technology at McMahon. So things are coming in pretty good.
So moved.
Thank you, Chris. Move for approval by Mr. Ike, seconded by Mr. Berman. Questions?
Chris, did you wanna go through the previous one to show the savings or no?
Um, no, I just, yeah, I just updated it. I would like to have, uh, shared that originally, but I, I was still working on it today cause things are kind of fast. Um, I can, if you'd like, if anyone wants to see it, we can go over it and I can kind of explain how this, uh, saves us some money, but, um, we can do it next time if we wanna do a review.
Yeah, um, if anybody wants to see it next time, please, uh, please let us know.
All right.
Other questions? All in favor of approving the CDWG quote, sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-four cents, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. And thank you very much, Chris.
Thanks.
Okay, so Glenn, um, how about a, how about the budget first, Glenn?
Sure. All right, let me share my screen again. All right, so I did just plug in Chris's number for the D mark relocation. Uh, so up for discussion tonight, we had the main entrance canopy, which we know we'd like to go with two canopies ideally. For one hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Gordian Group's proposal to install the footings for two canopies was forty thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars and nineteen cents. Um, which brings us to one hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars. Uh, besides that, we do have a placeholder for landscaping, which includes children's garden. Um, uh, additional sidewalk, uh, new landscape plantings. Um, essentially parking lot line strapping. Uh, it's quite a miscellaneous line item of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we have a proposal this evening for TSKP for those additional services. Um, working with Richter Seegan, SLR. And, um, some structural engineering fees for the design of those canopies for forty-one thousand, nine hundred eighty-four dollars. Um, if we total everything up, including our placeholder for landscaping, um, it will bring us over budget.
Um, what is that number there? Over budget?
So, um, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred forty dollars. Taking into account our one hundred and three thousand, forty-five dollar contingency. Uh, we would be short sixty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars. Plus the, should we have the technology portion we just spoke of, the invoice for fifteen seventy-five? Would actually bring us to sixty-eight thousand, two hundred seventy dollars.
Glenn, if you go back to, if you go back to that TSKP, for the children's garden ADA parking sidewalk, man, uh, believe you got a typo there. I think it's forty-one, eight ninety-four.
Forty-one, eight ninety-four. I did check. There was two proposals. There was an updated one dated the twentieth, I believe. That was the latest number.
Yes, when I have, I can't put yet. It is forty-one, eight ninety-four, but I'd also like to, right, right.
Right.
I'd also like to point out that that, uh, also included in that proposal, um, was on top of that number, was continued construction administration services to be done on an hourly basis. Um, not to exceed what we are, what we have currently spent, uh, per month of approximately forty-one hundred dollars, uh, per month. So we've got a, a few months of that, um, you know, ahead of us. Um, actually, I'd like to attack th- this one first, if we can. Um, I have worked with, with Jeff, uh, at TX, TSKP lot on this number. Um, and I am in favor of approving this. Um, he has agreed to do construction administration going forward on an hourly basis rather than as a lump sum, which is in our favor as well. Um, the, I mean, the whole McMahon project has been done quite differently. You know, it's been approached very differently than the Prosser project and we've been doing it kind of piecemeal like this. Uh, there's a lot involved in the design of the children's garden, uh, landscaping in the front. Uh, um, civil engineering drainage things, uh, the parking lot has been revised a bit as well. Um, you know, there's still more, um, designed to be confirmed. Um, so, you know, I'm in favor, you know, of approving, um, this proposal here. And I'll open that up to, uh, a motion and discussion.
So moved.
By Mr., moved by Mr. Ike, seconded by Mr. Berman. Questions, comments? Lois, would you move the microphone to you?
Are we just discussing the TSKP portion?
Correct.
And, um, are we sure we're going to approve the other two portions?
I was going to discuss that following this.
Well.
Um, because I, you know, I think, I think we wanna have, uh, the design, you know, approved here. I, I, yes, we have, um, a shortfall right now.
Well, I just wanna clarify the numbers. It, the two canopies are a hundred and fifty-seven thousand and change.
Correct.
And the outside work is a hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
So it's a substantial shortfall.
So we are, we are, so we are short according to Glenn about, what was that, sixty thousand or so?
Sixty-eight, two seventy.
What I, what I wanna propose is, and maybe we should shift gears then logically. Um, and I mentioned it earlier. I'd like to move a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our CM contingency, uh, to this project.
So moved.
Uh, we do have a motion on the floor already. Why don't we, um,
Take care of the line first, Mr. Chairman. That's the most important, the design.
All right, so we'll defer that. We'll take back that motion. Thank you very much. And Mr. Berman is moving. We move a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from our CM contingency to the McMahon project.
Second.
Seconded by, uh, Patrick. Thank you very much. Okay. Questions, comments? Mr. Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I've sat down and I've looked at and talked with Downs about what might come up over the next, I'm gonna say five months. Cause that puts us in July. What kinds of things might come up that, that are gonna require us to spend more money? And based on the conversations, uh, I don't see a problem with moving a hundred and fifty thousand over at this point. And I suspected if we need to sometime in April, we're probably gonna have the ability to move more over if we need to. Between what's in construction contingency and our contingency, we have substantial mu- money sitting there to cover almost anything unforeseen that could come up, barring lightning hitting the library.
No, Bob, no lightning.
Grounded there.
If, yeah, we'll be all right. But, you know, that's the kind of ca- catastrophe that would have to happen to give us financial problems. I don't see that happening. I think moving a hundred and fifty thousand over is prudent.
Lois?
I would like to say, having sat here with Bob all this time and having him say, watch out, watch out, watch out. Be careful, be careful. Something will come up. I'm good with this. If he's now happy with it, I think I'm very happy with it.
That was very refreshing, Bob. Thank you. Who are you and what did you do with Bob Berman? That's, okay. Um, all right, other questions, comments on, uh, moving the, um, contingency money over? Right away, guys. All right, all in favor of moving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from CM contingency to the McMahon project, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, so now we're funded. Okay. Thank you for that, Lois. Um. Let's go back to, uh, the TSKP, uh, proposal for, uh, added services.
So moved.
The right, uh, restates his motion. And, um, seconded by Mr. Berman. Uh, questions? Miss, go ahead, Patrick.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question is, is this a time and materials? Did you say this is gonna be monthly or is this gonna be hourly based on the services provided?
This is a combination. This is, this is a lump sum of the consultants to complete all of those items, design wise, construction administration wise, for the remainder of the project. And, um, and so that's a lump sum for those of forty-one thousand, eight hundred ninety-four dollars.
Okay.
On top of that, we would be agreeing to pay TSKP for continuing construction administration services. Uh, site reviews, you know, onsite reviews, review of materials and shop drawings, those normal, uh, construction administration services. Hourly, not to exceed, uh, it's approximately forty, there's the number, uh, I don't know where it, it's approximately forty-one hundred dollars a month. Which is what we have been paying up to this point until,
Actually, Mark, you've been paying, you've been paying more actually, but I reduced it.
Um, was it, was it over forty-one hundred? Okay.
It was forty, it was forty-seven something.
Forty-seven. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I reduced it to try to help out here.
Thank you, thank you. I was not aware of that. I thought that was the number we were spending, so appreciate that. Um, sad to answer your question.
I think so. So the forty-one, what I'm seeing in column B there, the forty-one, two,
Ninety-four?
Oh, eight ninety-four. That's a not to exceed also?
No, that is a fixed number.
That's fixed. Okay. Okay.
Other questions?
The other one is a not to exceed.
Lois?
How do we decide when it's done? We don't have a timeframe associated with this.
When what is done?
Well, Glenn, Glenn, Glenn and I will, Glenn and I will probably do a punch list.
Uh, when, well, it's same process we've gone through with all the other design elements. Um, we will approve the design. It will go out to bid. Rebuild. Um, so it's when we,
I just wanna be sure it's not an open and open-ended commitment.
Oh, in terms of time?
Yeah.
I honestly, I'm not concerned about that cause it's in everybody, it's in their best interest to finish it quickly.
Hey, you're the man with experience.
Other? Other questions? Okay, all in favor of the TSKP proposal for additional services at McMahon, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Um, so why don't we, um, Glenn, we should probably give you approval on, um, the, uh, two canopies then. Cause it's, was included in your budget. I think it would be a, okay, Lois, Lois moves, uh, approval of going ahead with two canopies. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Berman. Thank you. Questions? Comments? All in favor of two canopies, please say aye.
Aye.
It wa- it was pro- a hundred and fifty-seven thousand. It was in, in his budget. As presented, yes. I'm sorry, we got interrupted.
Could we get a copy of the, this budget?
Absolutely, absolutely. That will be, um, Glenn, if you send that out to, um,
Be nice to see the up to date.
Yeah, that was, it was for the last week's meeting, but it, if, uh, Glenn, if you can, if you can update that for us with the a hundred and fifty thousand dollar addition and then, uh, send it over to Joe, we'd appreciate that.
Certainly.
Uh, okay. Meanwhile, uh, back to, I'm sorry, we got interrupted. Um. Uh, all in favor of approving the two canopies, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Okay, motion passes. We have two canopies.
Great.
Okay. What else you got for us, Glenn?
Um, I guess going back to the, the Gordian Group proposal for the installation of the footings for two canopies. Uh, that was in the amount of, we're getting there. Forty thousand, five hundred thirty-one dollars and nineteen cents.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Ike, seconded by Mr. Berman. Questions? It actually falls within the budget we just approved. All in favor, uh, of approving the footings, concrete footings for two canopies, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Okay, thank you. What else we have, Glenn?
I think that's all I have for now.
Okay, uh, Elizabeth, I see a hand.
Yes, I just wanted to thank the committee and everyone involved, Glenn and Jeff, for continuing, uh, to make the McMahon Wittenberry Library the best it can be. It's really exciting and, and I'm thankful for everyone involved.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay.
Appreciate that, Elizabeth.
Anything else for Glenn? All right, Glenn, we thank you. So, um, let's move to, um, Jeff at TSKP.
Okay, so I will have at the end of this update, uh, the drawing. I'll share my screen and walk through the signage around the site on the sides of the building. First, uh, I just wanna say that I'm continuing my site visits. Uh, Downs and myself have had plenty of virtual meetings lately and I'll probably keep going and intensifying until we get this thing done. Quality control oversight, ongoing work continues. RFI and submittals, just when I think they're done, a few trickle in, so I just, you know, just get those out as fast as I can. Lead online data is still ongoing. Um, and let's see, the FFNE, uh, according to Jeanette, we're still on schedule. She has still in here the TSKP acceptance walkthrough, June ninth and tenth. Um, so other than that, if there's no questions, I can probably share my screen and go through the site signage if everybody's okay with that.
We good? We're good. Go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. Let me just see if you can see this. Let me know if you can see it.
All good.
Okay, so let me give you an overall sort of picture here. Um, so this is the sheet that was part of the contract documents that included the signage from SLR. Our civil engineer. So you'll see the sign legend on the lower right-hand side. The side with the, uh, north facing right of the site. So each of those symbols for the signage, I went ahead and located around the site. So as I zoom in or walk through the building, we'll get a clean picture of what we have. So let me just start with, uh, is it zooming in here? It's gonna be hard to see. Looks like I can zoom in here. Can I zoom in? Yes. All right, let's start. I guess we'll start here. So coming off of Tonxus, everybody see this? We're coming in from the east side, right? Towards the parking area on the north side of the building. And these C symbols here are the actual signs that I put next to the symbol where that sign would actually read, do not enter, because this is a one-way directional sign which will be right here, so that it directs traffic in to the parking garage. So on that elevation, and I should say first that Elizabeth worked hard trying to get all this information, meetings that she had with many people to distill this down for us, so it's elegant and clean and simple. So I appreciate everything that she's done to help feed this, which I will after this meeting, if it's accepted, I will submit it to Downs. Is there some slight changes here? For instance, that little right diagram that says parking height clearance bar here. If you recall, there was some large signage here that said Prosser Library Parking. We've eliminated that. And instead had it on the main side of the parking garage, and we'll get to that in a second. So as you come into the garage, we have a number of parking stalls in here. It was determined that besides the handicap accessible stalls, the signage that was always part of the project, we will not have any other signage in here with the exception of this one stall, which will be reserved for staff and deliveries. And this is right next to the entrance into the elevator lobby and everything. So as we come through the parking garage out here, there will be a symbol for no left turn and a stop sign. Facing the elevation of the south side here of the porch, we will have a sign that says Bloomfield Public Library. And we used to say Bloomfield Public Library Parking. We got rid of the word parking, so we simplified that. As you know, we did have some MDC modifications with this plaza wall. And we had to reconfigure that along with this signage. So you'll see the illuminated Prosser sign both sides atop this stone wall, the plaza wall here. To continue down Mountain Avenue towards the Riley site, what we have is we have a stop sign coming out. We have accessible handicap parking under the building, a sign there that designates that. There's a new sign that we will be putting here stating Bloomfield Public Library Parking. We have a couple of charging stations here. Handicap accessible spots. There is a pedestrian crosswalk here with arrows pointing to it. Gave entry into that bridge area, the connector of the bridge. Anything else we have over here? Let's see, I think that is it.
Jeff, are the
Yes.
Charging stations handicapped spaces?
Well, let's see, let's do it here. Yes, I believe they are.
That might be, yeah.
Doesn't sound right.
No parking except for electric vehicles, but they're handicap accessible. They're handicap accessible, you know, say somebody who needs to charge their car and they're handicap accessible. They can park there.
Okay, so they're not required handicap accessible.
They're not.
They are, you know, charging stations which need to be handicap accessible.
Sorry.
No, it's a good question.
Good point.
All right, so any questions? I believe that's all the signage we have around the site and on the immediate, on the building.
Mr. Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff, number one, I was on the impression that any of the spots in the garage that were not handicap were going to be families with children only. And it's not going to be marked. How many handicap spots are there going to be? How many others are there going to be in the garage?
There's five.
Five what?
Handicap accessible parking spots.
And how many?
They're labeled here.
Okay, and how many non-handicap?
Uh, let's see.
Five, six, seven?
Ten.
Ten?
Minus, minus the staff and deliveries of one.
Nine minus the staff and deliveries.
Yeah, I, I guess, Elizabeth, I, I'm sure you talked about it, you know, the possible need for additional signage, maybe you're deferring that to see how it all works out.
Yes.
Comments like that.
Yes, we think that we are going to have to manage expectations with the public when this building opens, no matter what. Specifically because we know that we're going to have really, really higher than average use for the first three to, for the first year, but specifically the first three to six months. So we want to see what user habits look like before moving forward with any permanent signage underneath the building. That being said, I think that no matter what signage we put under the building, whether it be for families or for seniors or, or whatnot, it's, there's just not going to be enough parking there. So given time, I think people are going to learn that, but I think a lot of people are going to have to experience it first before they fully learn it. If that makes sense.
I think it does. Lois?
I'm not quite clear on what the do not enter signs accomplish.
The do not enter signs are to prevent anybody from, if they make a mistake and come out and ignore this one-way sign that's here, they'll see the do not enter that they should not go reverse traffic out onto Tonxus Avenue. Sure, this is a slope, slope hill, or a slope drive. This is all.
What you mean is, you mean drive all the way through if you've gotten this far? Is, is that the idea?
Yeah, and granted, this has gone through all the legislative planning zoning, everything early on, so these, these signs have not changed, they've always been here.
That's to keep people from driving upwards.
Maybe it's the orientation I don't understand.
Yeah, the do not, see this, see this circle here? That's the backside of the sign. The line through here means it's facing west.
Okay, thanks. I thought it was for the people coming in from Tonxus.
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, no, no.
Other questions?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So Jeff, I just was wondering, when you're on Tonxus, you can also turn left in, right? Or is it only coming from the right? So you're on Tonxus heading, you know, that way, north, can you turn left into there? Because there is a traffic, you have the Wittenberry traffic light. I don't know if you're allowed to turn left from Tonxus.
Yeah, I'm not sure that. I do know here that they did note that there are some improvements from the CT DOT right away for this sign here, left turn only straight or right. So yeah, I'm not sure. It doesn't look like it.
Right, so I'm wondering, there should be a, would there be a sign that says no left turn? Into that, you know, into where the arrow is there, there should be something that says no left turn.
Yeah, I don't remember, honestly. Bob Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That would be a state issue because it's a state road.
Yeah.
So DOT would have to deal with that.
Yeah.
I mean, but the way traffic flows to make the left, if somebody's sitting there wanting to turn left in there, if it doesn't, people are still going to pass on the right as they do now, instead of taking that right lane and turning on the Wittenberry, they go straight through now.
Yeah.
So it's always going to be a problem.
Yeah. Unless DOT puts a no left turn there or something.
I think it was intended for no left turn, and that's why it's curved, that drive, that entry is curved the way it is. But we can certainly, Jeff, maybe you want to touch base with our traffic consultant?
Yeah, I'll start, I'll start.
Yeah, he'll, he'll, he'll remember, because, because that marking on Wittenberry was part of the package as well, which is shown there. Okay.
Jeff, just to clarify, as you come down Tonxus Avenue, the east side, the east elevation, there is no signage on that elevation, is that correct?
On the building?
Yes.
Or anywhere on the site?
East elevation of the building.
No, I think, I think the idea is that the building itself is going to be signage. We will have the stone plaza wall signage that will be lit up on both sides. But that's it.
Okay, so you didn't show that in this presentation?
Yeah, you did, that's.
Didn't show what?
Over, just show us again the Prosser Library sign on top of the wall.
Okay, I forgot that.
Yeah, it's right here.
Thank you.
Two-sided. Actually, now that that planter wall had to be turned, rotated a bit, it's now more perpendicular to Tonxus Avenue than it was. So it's even better in terms of reading that sign on Tonxus.
Even, even everywhere, even across diagonally towards Town Hall.
Yeah. Other questions?
I had.
Elizabeth, go ahead.
Um, just to point out that where we had those two spots before on Tonxus, they will not exist anymore, correct?
The, the drop-off, the widening of the road? I, I don't think we were revising the shape of the road, but I don't think there's any signage.
Yeah, I don't. I don't think so. I think they're just trying to suture it into what's there. Yeah, so like previously it went all the way up into here, it looks like.
So they're technically not there? I think that falls back to the, well, it's all going to go away when the roundabout goes in, which isn't happening. So. Elizabeth, that is a good question. We should confirm that.
Because if we could have two, you know, fifteen-minute spots there, that would be really great.
Yeah, I, I don't see why we couldn't, because we're not reconfiguring the curb line. Yeah, so we should look at that, see if we can make that happen. It would make sense. All right, so aside from that, how about a motion to approve the exterior and building signage as presented?
So moved.
By Mr. Ike. Seconded by?
A second.
Patrick, thank you. Any more discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any ayes? A motion passes. Elizabeth, thank you. I know you spent a lot of time and Jeff as well. I think it looks good. Hopefully our interior signage will go as well eventually.
Yeah, we should touch base on that dedication area, yeah.
All right, what else you have for us, Jeff?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Under invoices, we can, we can do that under invoices? Okay, so, okay, so we have Sean and Tiffany from Colliers. You guys are on. All right, go for it, Tiffany. I know, everybody remembers their first time.
I guess I'll take it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My report's similar to how it always is. Tri-State continues to do the testing. All reports continue to go to Michael Horton Associates. And they've been submitting their field reports back. And all the reports continue to be submitted to the local building official. I mentioned in the meeting yesterday, Tri-State did send over ten invoices and a lump sum on Sunday night. So I'll be reviewing those this week and get those over for the next meeting. I was just kind of letting you know that they're in process. I haven't had a chance to approve them yet, no, so we'll table those. Onto commissioning Van Zylm has been continuing their site visits, as Anthony mentioned. And they also did submit two of their invoices. I have a typo, I, I think there was just two, Joe, right? Two Van Zylm or three? Three total Van Zylms. So those have all been approved and Joe was kind enough to get those into the package for tonight. In terms of move management, there was a meeting today that I was not able to attend. Doug and Tiffany and the library staff met with WB Meyer to just update everything on the move status. Doug, are you still on the line? Did you want to talk to that at all or?
Yes, we, we met with, with Chris and Allison, talked about the move for initially McMahon, but also Prosser. So we'll be moving, doing a small move for McMahon on March tenth to get them ready for a soft opening on St. Patrick's Day or thereabouts. But the full move will happen after all the furniture is in at Prosser, so ended, end of May, early June. But yeah, right now, you know, Myers is on board, they, they see no problem with being able to staff up and provide the coverage that we need, so.
Thanks, Doug. So that is tentative, of course, on the, if the extension can be made for two more months rent there in the atrium, I know that's still a discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sure we can do whatever we need to, you know, in extending our stay there.
And we'll continue to update that schedule based on this, more information that Jeff gave about the furniture deliveries. And as that progresses with the vendors and lead times on specific items, we'll continue to update that milestone schedule.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, Doug, I missed you there before. All right, questions for our owner rep? Mr. Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess as a director to the library staff as well as Doug, if a soft opening is going to be St. Patrick's Day, does that mean that the IT services, three thirty Park Avenue will be moved over then also?
Yeah, that's, Chris, would we have to answer that?
Yes, that is the plan. As soon as McMahon-Wittenberry Library is ready to open to the public, we will have to use the staff that was previously scheduled at three thirty Park at McMahon-Wittenberry Library. So as we're talking about this timeline, you know, we are also thinking in coordination with this fiscal year's budget and next fiscal year's budget on the town side. So Mark, it was really good to hear from you that we will be able to extend our stay in the atrium as needed, seeing that the date of substantial completion for Prosser seems to have been moved a little bit as well. But we are hoping that on St. Patrick's Day, we will be able to have a lot of services available at McMahon-Wittenberry Library, if not all the ones that people are, were used to at that location. And that will require, unfortunately, pulling the staff from three thirty Park.
Is there, then is senior services equipment coming back at that date?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that, Bob. So the plan is some equipment in there we need to bring back. There's a copier, there's a printer, a Scan X machine. But all the computers in there can stay. And so I, I was, we're going to have a discussion. I don't know what, you know, senior services or anyone in that building want to do, but the computers that are currently there can stay. Some are, some are from the library, they're just some of our computers we won't need as we get new computers. Some are, some are from the library, they're just some of our, um, computers we won't need as we, um, get new computers and some of them were originally there, so. That's the one nice thing, at the end of this, they have a lab that is working, I don't know what they're going to want to do with it.
May I respectfully suggest that tomorrow you contact senior services, let them know the timeframe in the planning? So they're aware?
They're somewhat aware, but we, we're wanting to reach out, we're just trying to make sure things are firmer before we.
Thank you.
Once we, uh, once we have some firm furniture delivery dates for Prosser. Then the remainder of the schedule can be, can be finalized, so hopefully that comes in real soon, that information. Other questions? For the Colliers team? Okay, we thank you on that.
Thank you.
Um, so let's go to, um, Joe with, um. Other invoices, because we haven't paid enough yet tonight.
We can't hear anything.
Oh, nothing's happening, so hold on, Joe's just getting organized.
Nothing's happening yet, I'm getting there.
What do we got first, Joe?
Those were all invoices for today. Yeah, proposals and seal.
Okay, so you, this one first? All right, so we've got, um, TSKP Studios for, um, Construction Administration Services. Um, at Prosser, uh, be, I, we need to have a discussion about this. Um, because this brings the Construction Administration Services to 100%. In conjunction with this, we did have a. Letter from. TSKP, Jeff wrote us a letter and he had requested. That TSKP be continued, uh, we continue to pay them the same amount. Uh, of this roughly $21,000 a month for the remainder, um, of the Prosser project, that letter is, is up in front of you. Um, Joe has officially responded to that, I've discussed this with Joe. Um, in my opinion, um, and in, in conjunction with Joe, we worked on this together, and going back through contracts and so forth. Um, at the beginning of construction. Uh, January of 24, when we had our groundbreaking. That's when we made a, a, um. Fee adjustment for TSKP. Uh, an overall fee adjustment, uh, because the project. Um, had come in. A lot higher than the budget. Um, and so TSKP had asked for additional fees. Uh, we negotiated that successfully, and a portion of that additional fees. Uh, was specifically earmarked for Construction Administration. Um, so my feeling was, we had already paid our extra for Construction Administration. Uh, and I was not willing to entertain any further. Construction Administration fees. Um. It's never quite that simple. Um, there is a timeline involved here to some extent. That may be real or implied. Um, but at any rate, I'm not comfortable bringing the, uh. That fee line to 100% at this point. Um, so, um, thinking aloud here, um. I would be willing at this point to entertain. Um, some portion of this. Um, while we continue to negotiate. Um, we did receive a letter back from TSKP today. Um, explaining that, uh. They had, they thought they had made it clear, uh, back in October of. Get my dates right, October of 23. Uh, this is the letter in front of you here, and without getting into the weeds. Um, was that they were going to spread out their Construction Administration Services for 18 months. Um, starting October of 2023, which does expire now. Um, I do not necessarily agree, um, that that is a contractual thing. I think it is open to further negotiation. Um, and that's why at this point I would, uh. I would entertain a motion that we, uh, would approve, uh, a rebilling of this at a, at $5,000. As we keep things moving here, moved by Mr. Ike. Seconded by Mr. Berman. Uh, discussion, please, Mr. Berman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh. While you were talking, I was saying, you're thinking, okay, what's a, is there a reasonable percentage rather than a flat dollar figure? And. I was thinking in terms of 30%, which is slightly more than the $5,000. But. I have no problem with making it $5,000, I think that's a reasonable number. And subject to continuing negotiation to see where we go with it. Uh. Yeah, I. We, we plugged in additional money back when everything changed. And. I think, I think we, uh. I, I think negotiations continuing will bring to fruitful conclusion at some point along the line. And I think that, you know, giving him some, we have to give him something, I have no doubt in my mind about that, I think 5,000 is a reasonable number to do.
Thank you. I, I would hope that, uh, this negotiation could be. Uh, wrapped up satisfactorily by our next meeting in February, that, that would be my hope anyways. Other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Patrick.
Okay, so would that then be an amendment to the existing contract that we would? Possibly say $5,000 a month for, we would pay the, are you saying we would pay this invoice? Which closes down 100%. Of this con- design for this contract? And then we have an amendment that adds the 5,000 and then put a time for it?
No, no, what, what, we're, what this motion is to revise this bill for a total of 5,000. Versus the requested 21,000.
Okay, so open this back up.
And, and, and then the remainder of that would be subject to negotiation.
So we're due.
Right, and, uh, you know, whatever conclusion we came to, if it requires additional fees, it would be an amendment.
And it would be an amendment?
Right.
Okay, okay.
But it could just be the timing of the paying of subsequent.
Correct.
It, it would just be a question, to some degree, could be just a question of when are we going to pay the balance?
Correct, correct. That was our, um, initial stance. Um, um, no additional fees, just. Uh, a portion of what's remaining for the remainder of the project. Uh, in fairness, the, uh, certainly, um. The shop drawing phases and things are more front loaded on the job, there's no question about that. But on the other hand, um, Construction Administration can be viewed as a body of work. To be completed based on the design of the building. Um, so, um, we will continue to, to negotiate this. Other discussion?
Elizabeth has a question.
Elizabeth.
I was just wondering, um, will Jeff still be at all of the owners' meetings?
I, that will be part of this negotiation to ensure that. Um, yeah, yeah, no, we cannot, we cannot lose our architect. Um, and, um. Uh, there's a lot at stake on all, for all parties, so I have no, uh, no qualms about Jeff continuing here. Um, assuming we reach a satisfactory conclusion relatively quickly. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving TSKP Studios invoice for a total of $5,000, please say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay, motion passes. Thank you for that. What do you got next for us, Joe? You said we're ho- uh, uh, we're holding on the Tri-State?
Correct, okay, yeah, the 10 Tri-State, if you could give me some time to, uh, review and approve those, so we'll just not even present those.
Yep, I'm not gonna, 16K for February's rent for the atrium?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Berman, seconded by Mr. Ike, questions? All in favor of the RJ Properties invoice for $16,000 of rent, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes, thank you. GeoQuest.
One from GeoQuest for $3,940. Services.
So moved.
By Mr. Ike, seconded by.
And 20 cents.
By Mr. Berman, thank you very much. Um, explanation of services, who's got, who's, uh, who's got the best explanation?
Um, well, I did review this, this is for the testing of the soils from the last of the utility trenching. And, uh, GeoQuest has a contract directly with the town from way in the beginning of the project. Um, so it's all in line with, um, what they've built in the past.
Which trenching, I'm sorry?
The, uh, last little bit of utility trenching that was just done where the contaminated soils, the, the, uh, that were in question earlier. They had to be tested before they could be determined where to be sent.
Any other questions? All in favor of the GeoQuest invoice, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes, thank you. And are we doing the Van Zylms?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Uh, there's a couple of Van Zylms because we had some clarification and we asked that to, uh, put more. Clarification on their invoices, so everything should be there with more of a description on the second page of each invoice.
All right, so what do we have first?
Nine. It's 90720. And this is through June 29th.
So moved.
By Mr. Ike, seconded by Mr. Berman. Questions?
I didn't understand the dating on these.
Because the dates are so old? Yeah, they're horrible with their billing. Um, and. When I asked them to revise it with more detail, it was months before I heard back from them, so. These are past invoices that we finally got acceptable answers on, and, uh, so that's why they're all being approved now.
We might want to remember this for other projects.
Yeah, we've, they've been asked very, by Sean, uh, to include in, all the, all the rest of the invoices have that backup.
Other questions? All in favor of the Van Zylm invoice, $907.20, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes, thank you.
Next one also from Van Zylm. $4,083.20, this goes through November 2nd.
So moved.
By Mr. Ike, seconded by Mr. Berman. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the Van Zylm invoice for $4,083.20, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes, thank you.
And the last one we have also for Van Zylm, in the amount of 181440.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Berman.
Second.
By Mr. Ike, thank you very much. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor of Van Zylm invoice for $1,814.40, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes. Okay. Oh, you're good?
I am good.
It was good, um, other items from the committee, Elizabeth?
I think we had, um, to update the Zono, uh, request from last month. Joe, do you want me to?
Yes, please.
So when we originally got the Zono invoice approved, um, we had said that we had needed. $23,100, which this committee approved, but that amount did not include the $1,200 shipping fee. So we need to update that request or just update, um, that $1,200 be spent. Um, for the shipping of the Zono machine for the McMahon Wittenberry Library project.
I, I did, I went back and looked at that invoice, uh, Chris actually called out and sorted Elizabeth on me, on that, um, the, the numbers did not include the shipping.
Uh, so Joe, you have that paperwork?
I don't have it with me today.
But you have, you were in possession of this paperwork?
Yes.
Committee has not seen it, that's.
Uh, the committee saw the original paperwork for the Zonos machines and that was approved.
Right.
Um, the only thing that wasn't, was on their, on their invoice was the 1,200.
Oh, was on that paperwork?
Was not on that.
It's not, okay, well, I'm saying is the committee has not seen the $1,200 in writing.
Correct.
You have.
Chris, do you have that to show? I don't have it with me.
Oh, the 12, the, um, shipping fee, I believe, was included in that paperwork. I don't think I have the invoice though to bring it up, Chris, do you have it?
Um.
I just want to make sure it's in writing and somebody responsible has it.
I will, I will verify it. No, we don't have a meeting next week, we have a meeting in.
Or, or we wait till the end of February. It's their choice.
And, uh, you have your hand up again, Elizabeth, or is that Chris or?
I'm quickly looking for the, uh, the invoice, because the problem is if we don't put the order in, we're not going to have it. The machine in time.
Yeah.
Well, we're kind of be taking a leap of faith here without seeing something.
I, I'm going to make a motion to see if this works. I move we approve this $1,200 additional shipping fee for the Zonik machines, subject to Joe having. Hard copy of that actual invoice. That actual amount.
And sending it out to the LBC.
Moved by Mr. Berman.
I was able to find it if everybody wants, if I can share my screen and show it.
Well, let's, um, seconded by Clark. Um. Any discussion on, yeah, hold on Elizabeth, I think we'll do without it, um. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes, all right.
Just supply it to Joe, Elizabeth.
Confirmed, thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Elizabeth, thank you for reminding me.
Elizabeth, you, uh, you want to share of, an update with the, um, uh, Mr. Suggs dedication?
Yes. The library board had a special meeting in, and, uh, we had. Mark in attendance, um, the chair of the library building committee, and we also had John Capadona. Chair of the Wittenberry Historical Society in attendance. We had a rich discussion and we are currently exploring the possibilities of a three-pronged approach. The first, um, part of that being. To commission. A sitting portrait of Mr. Suggs that would be of very similar size to the current portrait we have. Of Mr. Prosser, where they could hang together in Prosser Library. The second part of it would be to have. A interview process with Mr. Suggs. That would hopefully, um, be part of the very famous, um, StoryCorps archive of interviews. Some people may be, um, aware of StoryCorps, it is where. Somebody is interviewed by somebody they know and it results in very rich discussions. And we were proposing that perhaps Mayor Wong sit and interview Mr. Suggs for that. Part of, um, for that part of the dedication and that could live in a digital archive. Both with Bloomfield Public Library, the Wittenberry Historical Society. Perhaps somewhere with the Connecticut State Library and then at a national level, um, with StoryCorps. And that would be something that would live on indefinitely and could be accessed by a much broader audience than just Bloomfield and Connecticut. The third part of the approach would be to update our Bloomfield Public Library website on the page where we currently have information about the history of the library, the history of Prosser Library and McMahon-Wittenberry Library and the the personalities behind that, and have some detailed research with perhaps pointing out to resources that further discuss Mr. Suggs. In this way, living digitally, tho- those materials could be accessed and researched and used by our students, and again, people beyond the borders of Bloomfield. We think that this three-pronged approach would be very sophisticated and far reaching. And we really do think that it would be a very respectful way to honor Mr. Suggs. In perhaps an even broader way than was originally intended when the council moved forward with this. So we are still doing research to figure out the cost of these things. To do it in a sophisticated manner would require the help of professional experts in these areas, including digital archives and videography, and of course, finding a portrait artist that, again, would do justice to what we're trying to do would require going through a process to find one and having Mr. Suggs sit for that person. So we are looking at a process to do this. We are looking at investigating a budget of what this would cost currently. We have $20,000 that was appropriated towards this from the council. But it may cost more than that. Again, we are still in the preliminary stages of figuring this out and presenting this approach and running it past the town manager. He's been briefed on this, and he's curious to see what the library board is going to think of it. The library board will be discussing this at their meeting next Tuesday. That meeting is at 5:30, and that will be a hybrid meeting that takes place both in BPL Atrium and online. And I believe that the town manager requested an update the next day following to see what the library board thought of where where things are currently. And I think also that I am hoping personally that Mr. Suggs could be briefed on this. I'm very curious of what he thinks, and I'm hopeful that he will be interested in this and and think it worthwhile to to move forward in this direction. So, Mark, did you want me to keep going, or do you want to take it from here?
Um, why don't we? Why don't you take some questions at this point? How about that?
Okay.
Questions for Elizabeth?
I guess I could.
Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Elizabeth, thank you so much. This is very informative, and I'm sorry I missed that meeting. I think I was away when that special meeting was held. My question is, so in addition to the portrait of Mr. Suggs, what else would there be on the first floor of the library? Because I thought that the charge was the first floor of the library needed to be dedicated to Mr. Suggs. So I'm just curious if there's been any other discussion around, you know, parts of the main the main level.
Yes, so we are. That's part of the process that we're still thinking through. There's not a lot of wall space. So I know that TSKP, I think, was asked to maybe perhaps identify some areas. As people may know, when going to, you know, cultural institutions, libraries, museums, playhouses, et cetera, you may have seen areas dedicated to somebody, and many times it's simply a plaque with their name. I guess when I was given this charge to kind of think through this, I I I went a little bit bigger, seeing how important this was to the town council. But we could put, you know, a plaque somewhere as well. Perhaps, I mean, that would be easier than moving forward with the portrait part of this process.
I I can say that the town manager felt very strongly that that kind of effort, you know, with more than just the portrait is is necessary to satisfy the town council. And I I would hope that the building committee would entertain, including in our budget, the portions of this that are mounted in the building. And perhaps the other portions that are, you know, out there in 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 the on the internet and so forth could be handled by the, you know, the remaining dollars that are, you know, here from the council. But we'll have we'll have to think about that once. Once the all the ideas are are pinned down and some budgets are in front of us, we'll certainly have that discussion. But I but I would like to float that out there now for you to think about, because I think the the project could afford, you know, some of this to to help out. But just so everyone understands the process, the the town manager is charged with this. And it's specific that he worked, you know, directly with the library board of trustees. You know, our role is what we always do is administer and help enable, you know, the solution. So and if anybody has comments, you know, things they'd like to see, I think, you know, I think, you know, we can go individually to the library board of trustees with ideas. Nothing wrong with that. And, you know, I look forward to their meeting next week, you know, to see see where this is going. Mr. Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My only comment is until I physically walk into the building when most of she rock is in and I can see what what's probably going to be empty space, what's probably not going to be empty space, you get a better feel for it, I can't make any suggestions to where anything should go. But I think at that one, I'm going to say probably three weeks, three to four weeks from now, that interior is going to be much more completed than it currently is. And we'll be able to get a much better picture and a concept of what's available in there. I think that's would be a very good time for us to take anybody on the building committee who wants to is to get into the building, take a look, look around, think about it so that our March meeting, we can probably make some decisions or at least have a spirited discussion about where what should go and what things might make sense. That, to me, seems to be a reasonable way to approach this because right now there are too many variables that nobody can control yet.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm hoping we'll have something to discuss it, you know, at the end of February, you know, without all the details, but that's my hope, you know. But we'll see how it plays out. I did start the process with with the architect to 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 look at, you know, some possible locations for things because the wall space, there is wall space, but as Elizabeth says, it's, you know, it's not everywhere, you know, there's got we got to really think hard about, you know, what's appropriate without without destroying possibilities for future changing displays that the library always has. Lois?
I would love to have them consider something that's ongoing in Mr. Suggs' honor that isn't stationary. For example, an annual meet your public servants meeting in honor of Mr. Suggs, something like that, because that's really what people were saying, that they wanted people who came to the library to know that Mr. Suggs had been a public service in his town and how important that is. And so I could see an annual meeting in his honor, and and the public officials could come and meet the kids, something like that. Something human, something active, not just on the wall.
Great. Well, that's a programming suggestion that obviously you just made to the library board of trustees.
And you opened it up for suggestions.
Right. Elizabeth?
I I love that idea, Lois. I I think that is a really great idea that our youth librarians could run with. And I to to just second what Bob and Lois both said. I that's how I was looking at this, too. Like, how can we make this really, you know, come alive and stand the test of time so that whatever decision we make in 25 years when none of us are here for this, is it still going to be? And so what Bob was saying, you know, we need time to like look at the space. So I'm really hoping that we can not feel rushed and try to make good decisions around this that will will stand the test of time.
As always. Thank you. Elizabeth, anything else or any other committee members?
I just wanted to note that it's Black History Month this month, and as always, I'm always asking that the library building committee participate in library activities. I really think it helps inform this entire process. And we have so many amazing programs for Black History Month, and I just wanted to invite everyone to try to put one Black History Month library program on their calendar this month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lois?
I just wonder when we expect to have the CO for the McMahon Library.
Glenn, do you have a?
Yep. So I've actually got the walkthrough with the fire marshal this Friday. So the fire panel has been commissioned. I do have the necessary documentation. The NFPA 72 report was completed. Once the walkthrough is complete with Jim Simone, I will then have Dwight, our building official, do his final inspection. So right now I am looking at two weeks to obtain the CO.
That's great. And and for Elizabeth, I'm sorry, for you, Elizabeth, maybe at an at a future meeting, you could take a few minutes to talk about what activities you're going to have at the McMahon Library that will draw the community there before the Prosser Library is finished.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up again, and I can tell you that the BPL team is really thinking through that. Our summer reading program is really going to focus on McMahon-Wittenberry Library. This is our community's chance to really see what an amazing library location it is and the services and the staff and, you know, that small-town community feel is one of the things that really sets McMahon-Wittenberry Library apart. And I absolutely, before McMahon-Wittenberry Library opens and continuing during McMahon's time to shine, will continue to bring those points to this meeting. Thank you, Lois. I I will absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from committee members? All right, Joe, do we have members of the public, and does anybody have their hand up? Yes and no. Okay. Well, thank you, members of the public for attending. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Lois.
Second.
Second by Mr. Berman. All in favor of adjourning? Say aye.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you so much. Long meeting, everybody, but a lot to a lot accomplished.
Thank you.